Can you hear me now? There we go. Okay, I'm gonna start over. It's seven.
Please repeat all that.
Seven o'clock. On behalf of the school board.
It's seven oh one.
Yeah, no, it's seven oh one. On behalf of the school board, we thank you for being here in person or virtually. I'm Heather Staggs, president of the school board. To my left is Luke Jackson, vice president, Dan Conway, secretary, Jackie Deckard, member, and Matt Hankins, member. To my right is superintendent Eric Boland and assistant superintendent Susie Lips. So if you will all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry. Let's do that all over again. Yes, it bothers me.
Okay, that's good.
Now it does. It's all good.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing the MSD of Martinsville employees who were selected by all employees throughout the district as outstanding staff members for the 2024-2025 school year. Only six staff members were chosen and are being honored for their outstanding service and dedication to the MSD of Martinsville. Please come forward when your name is called. And if you, when you come forward, the superintendent and the president of the school board will hand you your plaque, and then if you could stay up here until all others have been recognized so that we can get a picture that will go out amongst the world. Everyone will see it. Certified staff members, Tricia Anderson from South Elementary, teacher. Luke Moskrip, assistant principal at Martinsville High School. Cindy Wilk, teacher at Perrigan Elementary. I want to, yeah. Want to do a special recognition for Cindy. She is retiring after 32 years of loyal service. So let's hear another applause for her. Also recognized tonight for outstanding staff recognition, Heather Bales, the attendance secretary at John R. Wooden Middle School. And Gina Humphrey, food service representative, who, I'm sorry, Gina Huey, Gina Huey, food service representative, courier, and everything else. Thank you, Gina Huey. Thank you, Gina. And also not present this evening, but we want to recognize Kyla Sumner, custodian from Smith Elementary was selected. When selected, all of these individuals were cited by those nominating them as going above and beyond with their duties, working tirelessly, always willing to help and listen, being passionate, advocates for students, exuding amazing kindness and patience, and above all, serving as constant sources of positivity and support of staff, students, and the MSD of Martinsville. Congratulations to all those selected.
Okay, now we will give you an exit time if you don't want to stay for the meeting. It is up to you, but if you would like to leave, you are more than welcome to leave.
It's an enthralling meeting. At least if you're going out, make sure your significant other and your spouse treat you to a nice dinner tonight.
Or at least some ice cream.
And if you text me later and let me know where you're at, I might come and help you finish up.
All right. Moving on, we have our consent agenda. And the consent agenda consists of meeting minutes, payroll claims, payroll report, and check claims, budgetary claims, personnel report. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. And any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
There are no student field trips. We are at the end of the year, but I do want to point out one field trip that was done today at John R. Wooden Middle School, the day of giving. It's the third year that they've done that, and I know, Mr. Jackson, you got to see some of the work at the cemetery. They were at nine different locations today around the community. I think it's an outstanding thing that was started several years ago. They did that after the tornado, if you remember, that we did as a district, and they've kept that going, that spirit of giving and being part of something bigger than themselves. So I want to give a big, big shout out on the field trip thing to John R. Wooden Middle School and the students there. Krista Matthews organized it. She's unbelievable, to say the least, and the staff, fantastic. Mr. Cutriff, Mr. Peterson there, great job, John R. Wooden.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the MSD of Martinsville Food Service Director, Kurt Bodell, to describe the summer meal program opportunities for the families of Martinsville. Please welcome Kurt Bodell.
Thank you. Just want to quickly let you know about our summer meal program. So for about 17, 18 years now, we've been very fortunate to operate summer meals, and this year, we have a summer nutrition program. It's kind of Sun Mills is kind of what we usually call it. But new this year for us is a weekly meal distribution that's going to take place at Faith Church off 44 and I-69. And so that's going to be a weekly meal pickup for families that they can sign up for the week before, and then they can come pick that up that next Wednesday. And so sign up kind of helps us know how many is going to show up so we can plan accordingly. So that's new for us this year, and we're excited about that. Also continuing our program is our meal delivery. So within Ray and Baker and Southwest Jefferson Township, we do home meal deliveries once a week, and so we're doing those signups for that right now with those families. So we're very fortunate to continue to that program. And then we have our daily meal service out of the high school and the YMCA that families can, you know, come to daily and pick up lunch. So we're, again, very excited to share that, that news. And then just kind of publicly also, part of the USDA, they funded a program called Sun Bucks in the past, and so Indiana did not renew that this year with the USDA. And so that's a program that we will not be participating in, but just kind of wanted to make sure our community knew about that publicly, that that was a decision at the state level not to renew that. And so that's why those funds aren't going to be there. But, yeah, so we're excited, so thank you for your support, and we're just looking forward to continuing to count those days after that last day of school, because for us, it just keeps on going. So, thank you.
Hey, Kurt, I've got a real quick question, just so everyone would know. What time do you serve? And then what are the qualifications if someone wants a meal?
Yeah, so there's, basically, the qualifications are anybody age one to 18. There's no income, anything like that. On the walk-up sites at the high school, we serve 11:30 to 12:30, and that's daily at the high school. And then the Y is 11:15 to about 11:45. So those are the daily sites. And then the Perrigan distribution is on Thursday that they sign up for, and then the same thing on our Wednesday faith distribution. That's a sign up that's going to come out every Thursday the week before, that will get an email through Parent Square, that they can sign up for that. And then those pickups are on Wednesday between 10 and noon. And then all of our information is on our website, arties, A-R-T-I-E-S, cafe, C-A-F, cafe.org. And then that has a summer link at the top left-hand side. It kind of has more information there with times and things. So, great question.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. More exciting news in the district. The MSD of Martinsville was awarded the Project Lead the Way Distinguished District for the second consecutive year. All elementary schools in the MSD of Martinsville were named a Project Lead the Way Distinguished School. Bell Intermediate Academy received the PLTW Distinguished Launch School, and John R. Wooden Middle School received the PLTW Distinguished Gateway School. Martinsville High School was awarded the PLTW Distinguished High School. Thank you to Sharon Gooden and Shannon Adams, who lead the district STEM charge. They are our STEM coordinators. Congratulations to all schools. Pre-K openings, the MSD of Martinsville partnering with On My Way Pre-K. We've expanded our pre-K program. We still have available slots for next school year. Free tuition and reduced rate scholarships are available to all of the seven elementary preschool programs. Every family will be able to apply for a free tuition scholarship. Parents can call Central Education Center for enrollment information. At this time, we have a short clip for you and for those viewing at home to enjoy.
The MSD of Martinsville is excited to offer families the opportunity for On My Way Pre-K, where play-based learning opens the door to discovery and growth. Learning through play, the classrooms are designed to encourage curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking. On My Way Pre-K is offered in each elementary school and creates a strong sense of community for the four- and five-year-old students to develop friendships, teamwork, and a love of learning. Free tuition vouchers and reduced rate scholarship opportunities are available to assist families with funding. Students must turn four years old by August 1st to qualify for the On My Way Pre-K voucher. All families are encouraged to submit an On My Way voucher application. For those who do not qualify, there will be a monthly fee. If your child turns four after the August 1 deadline, please contact the MSD of Martinsville to get on the waitlist. Your child may be admitted this school year based on availability once they turn four. All of our pre-K classes use the Frog Street curriculum, which is designed to meet the unique needs of young learners. Through hands-on activities, students grow academically and socially in a supportive and fun environment. Join the MSD of Martinsville On My Way Pre-K program today and give your student the best start to his or her educational journey, one where learning is fun and every student's potential shines.
Coming up soon is our graduation for class of 2025. The pinnacle event for every school year is high school graduation. Graduation for the class of 2025 is scheduled for Friday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM at Martinsville High School. Martinsville High School Principal Jeff Bell and senior class sponsor Daniel Urban have prepared the festivities for next Friday. Summer school during June, Martinsville High School will offer summer school credit recovery courses for grades nine through 12 students. Martinsville High School students can enroll with their counselors. Shout-outs, end of the year shout-out to the John R. Wooden Middle School seventh and eighth graders who earned all As this school year, and a big thank you to the Wooden staff members who organized and hosted the annual All A Breakfast this week to celebrate the honored students. Also, a shout-out to the junior and senior students' parents who worked to provide an outstanding post-prom for the students that participated. Special shout-out to those graduating this year and their parents. Congratulations. Thank you for attending this evening.
Old business. I have to say this before we go on the On My Way Pre-K, the video where you saw the young lady walking and putting her footprints on the paper. Last week, I'm going through some of my boxes. You know how you move offices, and I moved three years ago, and I'm going through one of the boxes. In one of the boxes, I pull up an old trophy, an old award, and there is a paper that is there that's laminated, and it was my daughter's handprints on it from her pre-K days. And I took that home. She's in chiropractic school right now, thanks to the MSD of Martinsville and what they did to prepare her, but she was home on her trimester break, and I had that for her as a gift, and she was just in tears, how much that meant to her. I think she was surprised I kept it, but it did. It was one of those moments, and as a parent and for the pre-K parents, it's going to go so fast. Keep those, keep those, their sacred, their keepsakes for a reason. I challenge you to embrace it because it's going to go by so, so fast. So I really applaud the MSD of Martinsville for the On My Way Pre-K. I know Mr. Jackson was one of the proponents of that early. It's gone unbelievably well this year, unbelievably well, and we've gotten the certification level up there. We are a example for the state on how to kick it off. So, great job, MSD of Martinsville and the people involved in that On My Way Pre-K. Announcement here, I know people, I've had some ask about the new elementary. We are going to have a new elementary, and we're going to have a groundbreaking, unless Mr. Ratz corrects me here, at the end of August. Okay, that's when the groundbreaking will be. We'll unveil the plans and all of that at that time as well, and that will kick off everything else. There's been a little bit of a delay from pricing on some things, but we've got it going in the, when you see the renderings and start seeing that, it gets exciting. And when you see what we're going to have for our kids, the opportunities they're going to have, and it's not called STEM, even though we have the Project Lead the Way and the STEM initiative, it's STEAM, because A is added to the STEM for STEAM, because we really value the arts here in Martinsville. So all of our buildings will be STEAM certified. That's the direction we're going, and I think you're absolutely going to love what you see here in the very, very near future. So get excited, Martinsville. It's going to be something that will put us on the map, and it'll also be great for years to come. So, Mr. Ratz, thank you for your help in that project. That's all I have there for that part. But now I have action items.
Yes, we'll move on to action items.
Okay. All right, ELA textbook adoption. You guys have the recommendation, and it all coordinates with the state's approval, their approved program. I recommend approval for the board for this adoption.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve the ELA textbook adoption.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Couple things on this, and I don't know if we have the answers on some of this yet either. Do we know how much, what percent of screen time this is going to require? Looking at it online, there's quite a bit of screen time for this younger group of kids. Is there a percentage that they tell you when you get a curriculum, how much of it's going to be on the laptops or ballpark or other day?
You know, I don't know. I don't have an answer for that. I don't know how much screen time specifically. I'm sure it will vary depending upon delivery by the teachers. You know, there's going to be a certain amount of teaching and then interaction and activities that follow with enrichment. So I can't imagine that it would be exclusively screen time if that's what you're thinking. I would think the majority would not be screen time. It would probably lean the other direction.
Yeah, some of the feedback was more screen time than what some thought it would be when it first rolled out.
Can I address that too? Because I think it's a very important question, and it's something that our administrative team has to pay attention to at the building level for what you do. When you get a curriculum, it's a guideline. It is not something that, okay, just because they have something in there, that that's what you have to do. It's got a plethora of options. It has quite a few different things you can get, pull from, use, and stuff like that, but the teacher is still that expert. That's okay. I like this. Jackie, would you like to speak to that? I'm sorry, could you step up to the mic so people at home? Because she was part of this, so I think it's a great question.
So we piloted CKLA two years ago.
At Perrigan Elementary.
At Perrigan, and so we've used it over a year. I can speak for third grade. There's not any screen time for third grade. It's all books. We have read alouds. We do use a professional that does the read alouds. The teachers can do the read alouds, but, and it may have a short video. We're talking about five or 10 minutes, but that's it. There's no online access. We have paper and pencil workbooks, things like that. So as far as any other screen time, I'm not for sure what anybody else was talking about, but I can speak for third grade.
And I noticed too, you know, it said some of the pros that were given, there's explicit writing skills and things like that, which is great. So, you know, that's definitely not done on a device, so that was good here too, so.
I think they, when you look at some of these from the textbook companies, they put stuff in there that is just, I mean, they're trying to, they're selling to all 50 states, right? So they put stuff in there, and I'm telling you, there's some things we don't want. There's some things we don't like, and there's some things we will not use. So I think it's very important that we don't allow the electronics to drive our instruction. We allow our instruction to utilize electronics and devices to augment what we're doing, because we can get upside down on that, and that's something we'll have to pay attention to, our administrators and our teachers. That's your job, to make sure it's a great environment for the kids and it's appropriate. So I do think it can get out of hand, Mr. Conway, and we can't allow that, so it's a great question.
Yeah, the curse of writing was another one. I don't know, there's different programs. There was one with curse of writing, one with not. I hire people every day that can't sign a signature. It makes, it's frustrating. So I don't know if that was something that would be a part of it or not. I know there's different versions of it, so I don't know if that was maybe something to look into for the curse of writing. Okay, I thought it looked like there were different versions, and this didn't show which one it was. That's the reason I had. And again, I know there's stuff in there that we're going to have to weed out, because looking at some of that, I know with the governor change and some of the SEL stuff, it's going to be, there's different things in that, from what I could tell anyways.
Because as you know, there's a big difference between Indiana and California.
Yeah.
Right?
Small. Better be big.
Small gap. Thank you for that question.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, so all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one is the flexibility waiver that was approved by the state. Same format that we've used this year, the one hour, not the two that we had a couple years ago, and so I recommend approval of continuing the flexibility waiver.
And do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the flexibility waiver.
I'll second it.
All right. Do I have any discussion?
Well, I know two certain boys who would like the two hours back, but, because I've heard it.
From Matt and Dan?
I think it's important to point out too that even with this hour, you know, if it gets passed that, we're still above the mandated hours of education and instruction for our students. We're way above that, so.
And I, just so the board knows and the community knows, that time is valuable when you're trying to do the PLCs, and, you know, here you are adopting a new ELA thing for many of these elementaries. They need to be doing best practice, and the best way to get best practice is get that to them and have experts among our staff, like Jackie, guess what you're going to be doing next year, right? You know, we get our experts to go train our own, and that's an important part, and that has to happen during time. So this is a very valuable hour that we utilize, so I really, really appreciate. Talking to our new staff this past year, they said they would have really, really struggled mightily had they not had collaboration time that was built in. They really were appreciative of what we were doing, so I appreciate your support on that.
And for me to make that motion, it takes a lot, because that's not one thing I feel, and I've talked to a lot of teachers and parents, and so I did a lot of research, so I think it's a good program for the newer teachers and for like mentoring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward, I know we've kind of reevaluated each year. Is this something you kind of envision being more of a permanent?
Yeah, I think you have to apply each year, but most districts that I know around us, they all have it, the same thing, a built-in PLC time, and it's usually an hour in that timeframe. Some are 45 minutes, some are an hour and a half. Some are forty-five minutes, some are an hour and a half. Hour seems to be the sweet spot for it, but I can see it being a permanent ask, because it's been successful. And the more that we have to try to train our own and sort of educate new teachers, because the teacher pipeline people is almost empty. So we are people who are good people to try to train them on the job, is what it amounts to. And this PLC time, that mentoring time, is essential to try to bring them along. What I fear is what we have become. We're training some really, really good people, and they go to neighboring districts for more money. So that's why the issue with what's happening in the state and the General Assembly is worrisome to me because of us being able to compete and what that will eventually do. So we have to do a great job of making the time that the teachers have in our buildings as efficient, effective, and supportive as possible, so that they feel that that's more than just money. That's like, they feel valued, they feel supported. That has a value to it that doesn't have a dollar sign attached. So this is very important for that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. So all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now we have the Morgan County opioid settlement grant in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Many of you know, the county participated here in the state of Indiana on the opioid lawsuit, and it's coming to the counties now. And I have to really commend Mrs. Lips for spearheading this. She spearheaded the district's effort to identify needs that fit the criteria of the opioid grant. And her and her team, she can give, I think you ought to compliment and shout-out to some of the individuals that were on your team that designed this to get us the fifty-seven thousand. You want to make a quick?
Jordan Gallion, Emmy Lou Spence, Ally Miller, Jenny Oakley, Kurt Bodell. Thank you very much for all your time and efforts with that committee.
Yeah, so we were recipient of this grant, and we'll utilize it for, we have the Health Task Force to strengthen SAVE, our SAVE initiative, which is the vaping, the Hype Program, which is dealing with attendance. Then we have Youth First for Family and the YMCA summer programming, trying to wraparound services and cover more time when the kids are not in front of us, trying to help them in some very precious time. So I recommend approval of this opioid grant.
I'll make a motion, Heather, to accept the Morgan County opioid settlement grant.
I'll second it.
All right. Do we have any discussion?
Is it a one-time thing? Or is it yearly?
We can, we can apply again at the end of this year for next year. It was a three-year window or umbrella, but there might be more funds coming our way. But right now, we can apply for the next two years.
Super sad we have to discuss getting a grant for something like that, but it is what it is, and that's where we were as a nation, so.
Right.
It's terrible.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have the Duke Energy Foundation Applied Skills Workforce Grant, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. It supports advanced manufacturing, automation, robotics, welding technologies, and engineering. This, what a, what a great community partner Duke Energy is for us. So I definitely recommend approval of this generous grant.
I'll make a motion that we do that, the Duke Energy Foundation Applied Skills Workforce Grant.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd also like to give a shout-out to Shannon Adams, who spearheaded this particular grant, and she's here this evening. So thank you, Shannon.
I'll give you a round of applause for that one. Thank you. We are making some big investments from a district level on vocational. There's more to come. I can tell you, in the next, we'll have an announcement here probably midsummer on what we're doing this next year at the high school. And then we'll have a bigger announcement during next school year for what we're doing for the following school year, with some great partnerships that we've developed with skilled trades, professionals, and businesses in our region. So we're very excited about it. It's going to make a big impact on our students and their offerings. So Shannon, thank you for being a lead there at the high school on that. You and Mr. Bell and your team, you're all doing a great job, so thank you for that. Okay, the next grouping is about donations, so I'll name them all and then vote as one block, if that's okay. Items five through eight. We have donation from Wes Knox and Sons to Martinsville Academic ECA for eight hundred dollars. Donation from Delta Thayat Ato to Martinsville Academic ECA for seven hundred and twenty. Donation from Zertoma Club to MHS Academic ECA, five hundred dollars. And donation from Kiwanis Club of Martinsville to MHS Academic ECA in the amount of six hundred dollars. Great generous donations that we always announce each month. We're very fortunate and blessed here to have supportive organizations and community partners. I recommend approval of these donations.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Heather, to accept the donations that's been placed before us.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. And any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have public comments and announcements. Courtney, do we have any? And we don't have any. So it's back to you, Mr. Boland.
Well, I've already pontificated enough here this evening. Jackie, believe it or not, I'm not going to say anything else. Graduation is next Friday. We're looking forward to that. It's the culmination, as Mrs. Lips said, of a long year for all the kids. But what a long period from, for thirteen years for many of our students. We're really excited to celebrate with the families and with them next Friday. So see you at the high school. Looks like it's going to be about sixty-eight degrees, won't be too hot, so it'll be a nice evening, hopefully no rain. So, Mr. Preacher Man, make sure you get that taken care of for us next Friday, okay? That's all I have.
All right. Do I have any other board member comments?
I'd like to mention the Weekday Religious Education Program. I saw one at Perrigan Christian, and I think it was third and fourth grade from Perrigan. It was very, very good program. And I think it's nice that our school corporation is able to do that program. It's been, I was in it, I think they said it's been around for seventy years in the MSD of Martinsville.
You, what, go ahead. Say you talked about being an example. You know, for the state, a lot of other counties are restarting theirs and kind of looking at Morgan County as an example to pattern after.
We had, a couple years ago, at our superintendent group, there was a question about religious ed. There were only two of us that raised their hands, saying, yeah, we do it. And they're like, you still do it? Yes. We value it, we do it, and we will continue doing it. And then the state comes on, and I applaud them for making sure that that is done in all the districts. So, you know, Martinsville led the way. We stayed the course, and we will continue to stay the course. Proud to do it. Thank you for pointing that out.
I think we can all just express our sincere thank you and appreciation to all the teachers and staff for making it through another year. We have another week left, and it'll be a long week, I'm sure. But thank you all so much. Get some rest this summer and ready to go next year. And congratulations to all our graduates, too.
Yes.
Mr. Conway, I think you have a graduate this year?
She should make it.
She should make it. It's going to be a long four days.
Is she going to cross that stage? To piggyback on Heather, I'm glad you said that, Heather, because even though we did have some staff here that got recognized, and that was wonderful, all of our staff are wonderful. We have great staff in our schools, and we appreciate everything that each one of you do. Custodians, bus drivers, teachers, cafeteria, it takes all of you, aides, everybody, it takes all of you to make a school district run, and we don't take that lightly. So just want to say thank you, and we'll see all the graduates next Friday.
All right. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.